Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, April 14th Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Adoption. I'm calling this meeting to order, and I am going to skip the introductions till after our opening ceremonies. We have a big group here, so I will move on to that. If you'd please stand for the presentation of colors and our National Anthem.
Presenting our nation's colors tonight are members of the Northwest Cabarrus High School Air Force, JROTC, and their personnel includes Cadet Airmen 1st Class Devon Dale, Cadet Airmen Autumn Gray, Cadet Airmen McKeeling Hernandez, and Cadet Airmen Peyton Lasky. Honoring America tonight with the singing our National Anthem are members of the Pitt School Road Elementary School Chorus, under the direction of Mr. David Barnabas. Thank you.
You may be seated. So they did an outstanding job. We will thank for them to come and sing for us. So I'll introduce the folks here at our diocese. So we have our Teacher of the Year Caleb Snell. We have our, oops, try to get all those papers in order, Board Member Shannon Lancaster. We have Board Member Catherine Moore. We have Board Member Sam Tredaway. We have our Superintendent Dr. John Kupicki, myself, Rob Walters, Board Chair, Greg Mills, our Board Vice Chair, Pam Escobar, our Board Member, and Melanie Freeman, our Board Member. So those introductions, we will move on to setting of our agenda for tonight. And we will need a motion and a second to adopt our business meeting agenda. Oops, we have Pam. Pam?
Yeah, I would like to make a removal of an item from the Agenda 1007. I just think that that conversation needs to have more time, and we have the budget and staff is occupied with that. I just don't think April is a good time to be adding new things that are going to be time-sensitive.
Okay, thank you. We would need a second for that.
I'll take it that.
Okay. Any further discussion on keeping or removing that item from the agenda? Okay, well, then we need to vote on the amended agenda. If that does not pass, then we go back to the regular agenda. All in favor, please say aye for the amended agenda.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say no.
No.
No. That motion does not pass. So then I would need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda that's been presented here on Board Docs.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Mills to have a second.
My second.
Okay. Second by Mrs. Freeman. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor of adopting our agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, so that motion will pass, and did you get the no votes? So we've got quite a few recognitions and celebrations tonight. Looking forward to these. We'll start with our Impact Through Education Awards, and we have Mr. Phil Furr coming to the podium to present this. So, welcome.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Cox Mill Elementary School and the Performance Learning Center. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable Representative Adrian Caspar to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we continue our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support, and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and the Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now on to tonight's awards. May I have the Cox Mill Elementary School Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Cox Mill is Eli Banks. Eli, please come forward with your family. Tonight, we're proud to honor Eli Banks, whose initiative, hard work, and character have made a lasting impact on the Cox Mill community. Eli is known as the Flag Guy at Cox Mill, faithfully raising and lowering the American and North Carolina flags each day with pride and respect. It's a small task, but one that shows his consistency, dedication, and trustworthiness. In the classroom, Eli gives 100% effort in everything he does. He's focused, driven, and genuinely curious, always striving to be his best and encouraging others to do the same. His interactions with adults are always respectful and thoughtful, and he makes it a point to connect with those around him in meaningful ways. Outside the classroom, Eli shines just as brightly. He's an accomplished lacrosse and basketball player, active in his church's children's ministry, and recently presented his own performance poetry at a literacy convention, helping teachers improve their instructional strategies. What truly sets Eli apart is his strong character, his respect, responsibility, and willingness to lead by example. Cox Mill Elementary is a better place because of students like Eli. Congratulations, Eli. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary School. Right to that camera.
I got it. Congratulations.
Our next honoree from Cox Mill is Hannah Sheets. Hannah, please come forward with your family. Tonight, we're proud to honor Hannah Sheets, whose kindness, dedication, and respect have made a lasting impact on Cox Mill. Hannah is a natural leader, known for her bright smile, warm hugs, and genuine care for everyone she meets. Her simple "how are you?" isn't just polite, it's heartfelt and reflects the deep empathy she shows to all. She leads by example, showing respect and selflessness in every interaction. Manners come naturally to her, and she brings a strong work ethic to everything she does, whether it's tackling an assignment, helping a friend, or representing her school. She listens, learns, and constantly seeks to grow. Outside the classroom, Hannah's love for horses is a big part of who she is. She's learning barrel racing and training mini-horses with the same patience and determination she brings to school, showing her ability to care deeply, connect, and commit. Hannah inspires us all, teachers, staff, and students alike. She embodies the spirit of this award with her integrity, positivity, and kindness. Cox Mill is a better place because of her. Congratulations, Hannah. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary. Also from Cox Mill is Support Staff Member Vida Love. Ms. Love, please come forward with your family. Ms. Vida Love serves as an Instructional Teacher Assistant at Cox Mill Elementary, and from the moment she joined our team, it was clear she was meant to be here. Though she's relatively new member of our school family, her warmth, enthusiasm, and unwavering positivity have made her an invaluable presence in our building. From her cheerful morning greetings to her afternoon goodbyes, Ms. Love makes sure every student feels seen, valued, and loved. What sets her apart is her remarkable ability to connect with students, staff, and families across all backgrounds and experiences. She embodies what it means to thrive in a diverse school environment, welcoming differences and creating a space where everyone feels included. Vida steps in wherever she's needed, always offering a helping hand and a kind word. Whether she's supporting instruction, encouraging a colleague, or lifting a student's spirit, she spreads positivity in everything she does. Her flexibility, compassion, and willingness to go the extra mile help make Cox Mill more than just a school, it's a true community. Students look forward to their time with Ms. Love because they know she brings joy, patience, and genuine care to every interaction. Congratulations, Vida. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at Cox Mill Elementary School. And finally, from Cox Mill is Teacher Janita Rankin. Ms. Rankin, please come forward with your family. Tonight, we're honored to recognize an extraordinary educator whose dedication, leadership, and passion for student success have left a lasting mark on our school community, our Impact and Education Award recipient, Ms. Janita Rankin. As a 2nd grade teacher, Ms. Rankin is more than an educator. She's a mentor, a leader, and a trusted support for both students and colleagues. In her classroom, students feel seen, safe, and supported because she believes deeply that when children feel that way, they'll rise to meet expectations and often exceed them. She creates a joyful, engaging learning environment where students are empowered to take risks, explore new ideas, and grow. Her lessons spark curiosity and build confidence, and her adaptability ensures every child has what they need to thrive. But Ms. Rankin's impact extends far beyond her classroom. Among her peers, she fosters collaboration, shares her knowledge generously, and is always ready with encouragement and a fresh perspective. She brings a growth mindset to everything she does, embracing new strategies and continuously refining her craft. Currently, she's furthering her learning through professional development and instructional coaching, showing the same passion for her own growth that she pours into her students each day. Cox Mill Elementary is stronger because of Ms. Rankin. She uplifts, she inspires, and she makes a meaningful difference in the lives of everyone around her. Congratulations, Janita. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill Elementary. We will now continue with our April Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming the Performance Learning Center. May I have the PLC Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from the Performance Learning Center is Gwendolyn Padilla. Gwendolyn, please come forward with your family. Gwendolyn Padilla is an outstanding student, whose academic excellence and positive character make her a true role model among her peers. A consistent high achiever, Gwendolyn has earned Honor of Role distinction every quarter of the current school year, reflecting her strong work ethic, focus, and commitment to success. She is currently enrolled in courses at both the Performance Learning Center and Roan Cabarrus Community College, where she continues to challenge herself academically while preparing for her future with purpose and determination. Balancing high school and college coursework with such grace is a testament to her dedication and maturity. Beyond her academic achievements, Gwendolyn is known for her warm smile, upbeat personality, and ability to uplift those around her. Her positive attitude and kind spirit create a welcoming environment wherever she goes, and she consistently leads by example in both the classroom and the community. Congratulations, Gwendolyn. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the Performance Learning Center. Our next honoree from the PLC is Samuel Banks-Fish. Banks, please come forward with your family. Banks-Fish is a standout senior at the PLC, known for his academic commitment, leadership, and consistently positive attitude. A strong student and respected peer, Banks has demonstrated excellence throughout his high school career, earning him acceptance to High Point University, where he will continue his education in the fall. As a member of the class of 2025, Banks has been a shining example of what it means to lead with integrity and kindness. His peers and teachers alike recognize him for his respectful demeanor, work ethic, and ability to inspire those around him. Whether in the classroom, among friends, or representing his school, Banks brings positivity, focus, and a genuine enthusiasm for learning and growth. We're incredibly proud of Banks and all he has accomplished, and we can't wait to see what he achieves next. Congratulations, Banks. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the Performance Learning Center. Next, from the PLC is Staff Member Cheryl Brooks. Ms. Brooks, please come forward with your family. Cheryl Brooks is a dedicated and compassionate school social worker with 29 years of experience, and her impact on students, families, and staff is nothing short of extraordinary. A true advocate for student success and well-being, Cheryl brings a wealth of knowledge, empathy, and leadership in every aspect of her role. Throughout her career, and especially within the PLC community, Cheryl has gone above and beyond to ensure that the needs of every student are met. Whether supporting families through challenging circumstances, collaborating with staff to remove barriers to learning, or connecting students to essential resources, Cheryl approaches her work with heart, determination, and an unwavering commitment to equity and care. One of her key roles is leading the intake process at the PLC, where she welcomes and guides new students transitioning into the school from all across the district. Her warm demeanor, attention to detail, and thoughtful approach help ensure that families feel supported from day one. She is a trusted leader and a difference-maker, helping to shape a school culture where every student feels seen, heard, and valued. Congratulations, Cheryl. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the Performance Learning Center. And finally, from the PLC is Teacher Cindy Moore. Ms. Moore, please come forward with your family. Cindy Moore is a dedicated and passionate educator with 24 years of experience in the field of education, including 22 years of service in Cabarrus County Schools. For the past 11 years, she has focused her expertise on serving as an exceptional children's teacher, where she has become known for her commitment to student growth, inclusion, and collaboration. Currently, Ms. Moore shares her time and talents across three schools, a challenge she embraces with energy, enthusiasm, and a relentless drive to support every student she serves. Ms. Moore is a positive and uplifting presence among students, staff, and families. She is a natural collaborator who works closely with colleagues, administrators, and parents to ensure the needs of all learners are met. Congratulations, Cindy. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for the Performance Learning Center. This concludes our Impact Award presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Furr. So our next recognition is going to be the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we have Dr. Michael Williams at the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kupicki, and to our viewing audiences, both here and those watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April. We always want to begin with expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April is Demeeh She Young, a 5th grade teacher at Wyancoff Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Young, her family, and any members of the Wyancoff Elementary School Administrative Team in attendance to please come forward. Ms. Young, you were nominated by a parent for this award, and tonight, what I would like to do is read the submission. Ms. Young exemplifies every aspect of the CCS mission statement, "Providing equitable services to all children and families by creating trusting, respectful relationships through collaboration, communication, and commitment." Her care and her love for her students goes far beyond the hours spent in the classroom. She utilizes school-provided social platforms to network with parents, to offer her students' support at home. She meets her students where they are, both mentally and academically, while investing in each individual child. She brings joy, and love, and support, and laughter to her classroom. 250 words hardly feels like it's enough to truly capture the outstanding educator and person that she is. Parent says, "Ms. Young, thank you for your impact on my child and the difference you've made in his life, and thank you for allowing God to work through you to reach and inspire others." So from us here at Cabarrus County Schools, Ms. Young, thank you for the impact that you've made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom, and congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Okay, we will move on to our next recognition, which is the Everyday Hero Award winner, and we have Mr. Art Whitaker to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Chairman Walters, Dr. Kupicki. It is my honor tonight to present the winner of the Everyday Hero Award, sponsored by our partners at The Great Wall Lodge. I would ask that Dr. Benny Sloan and his family please come forward. Tonight, it is my honor to present this award to a very special and accomplished employee. Dr. Benny Sloan is currently a van driver for the McKinnon Vento Program. To recap the importance of that service, students that are experiencing homelessness are covered under this federal program that allows them to be transported back to their school of origin, allowing the student to have continuity of services during a very difficult time. Dr. Sloan is a remarkable employee. He has been driving for 27 years. He started out in Conaples City Schools, Roan Salisbury School System, and now Cabarrus County Schools since 2013. Benny was called into ministry in 1972, serving in various capacities of leadership, from associate pastor to pastor, and currently holds the title of Bishop and is the founder and president of Grace Biblical Institute and Seminary. He is up at 4:00 a.m., and he logs countless miles, taking students to and from various schools within the district. He is a member of our newly-formed Transportation Advisory Council and is married to Dr. Constance Sloan, which is a CDL driver for us. It is truly a family affair. He is a model employee. Benny, you are truly a leader. You set the tone for the workplace culture, and leading by example, you create a positive, productive work environment, and I thank you for that. Dr. Sloan, who did my distinct honor in awarding you the Everyday Hero Award for transportation, congratulations.
For multilingual learners, their teacher is often a bridge to a new language, new opportunities, and a guide who helps them find confidence in their voice. Brittany Brooks is that teacher and so much more. As the ML Teacher at Culture and Web Elementary, Brittany is not just an educator, she's a leader, a mentor, and a champion for her students. She has created a welcoming and engaging environment where her learners feel seen, valued, and empowered to succeed. Her classroom is a place where language learning is exciting and meaningful. She brings in innovative strategies, incorporates technology and creative ways, and meets each student where they are to help them grow. But Brittany's impact goes far beyond her own classroom. She collaborates with colleagues, contributes to school improvement efforts, and helps shape a school culture that embraces and supports multilingual learners. One of the things that makes Brittany truly special is the way she builds connections, not just with her students, but with families, staff, the community, and beyond.
the Year, and we have Ms. Amy Jewell coming to the podium.
She knows that relationships are at the heart of learning, and she goes above and beyond
Welcome.
Good evening, Board members, Mr. Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kapicki.
to make sure every student feels supported, encouraged, and capable of success. Brittany's dedication and belief in her students makes her an incredible educator and an invaluable
It is my absolute honor to stand before you tonight to recognize someone who truly embodies
part of our district. It's my absolute honor to recognize Brittany Brooks as our 2024-25 ML Teacher of the Year.
the heart of school social work, this year's School Social Worker of the Year, Ms. Elizabeth
Congratulations.
Batson. I would like to invite Ms. Batson and her family to come join us up here. Liz is an extraordinary professional whose work touches every corner of our district. She brings compassion, clarity, and unwavering dedication to students with significant needs, particularly those who are experiencing homelessness, abuse, and neglect. She goes above and beyond to ensure that our McKinney-Vento and foster care students have the support and stability they need to thrive. Whether navigating complex systems or addressing critical needs, Liz approaches every situation with care, urgency, and integrity. In addition to her tireless work with students and families, Liz is a steadfast support for her colleagues. We affectionately call her the policy guru, but she's also our enforcer of self-care. She checks in with the simple yet powerful "just checking on you," and somehow when things are hard, and in this work they often are, Liz always knows the right moment to offer a listening ear or word of encouragement. She is calm under pressure, incredibly patient, and never lets any obstacle get in the way of doing what's best for students and families. Whether she's educating colleagues, connecting with community partners, or advocating at the school, state, or even national level, Liz is a driving force for change and an invaluable resource to Cabarrus County Schools. As one colleague put it perfectly, "Liz is the most gentle soul, yet the most fierce advocate." It is with deep gratitude and great pride that we recognize Liz Batson as our 2025 School Social Worker of the Year. Congratulations, Liz, you are so deserving.
Year, and we have Ms. Amy Jewell coming to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, Board members, Mr. Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kapicki. It is my absolute honor to stand before you tonight to recognize someone who truly embodies the heart of school social work, this year's School Social Worker of the Year, Ms. Elizabeth Batson. I would like to invite Ms. Batson and her family to come join us up here. Liz is an extraordinary professional whose work touches every corner of our district. She brings compassion, clarity, and unwavering dedication to students with significant needs, particularly those who are experiencing homelessness, abuse, and neglect. She goes above and beyond to ensure that our McKinney-Vento and foster care students have the support and stability they need to thrive. Whether navigating complex systems or addressing critical needs, Liz approaches every situation with care, urgency, and integrity. In addition to her tireless work with students and families, Liz is a steadfast support for her colleagues. We affectionately call her the policy guru, but she's also our enforcer of self-care. She checks in with the simple yet powerful "just checking on you," and somehow when things are hard, and in this work they often are, Liz always knows the right moment to offer a listening ear or word of encouragement. She is calm under pressure, incredibly patient, and never lets any obstacle get in the way of doing what's best for students and families. Whether she's educating colleagues, connecting with community partners, or advocating at the school, state, or even national level, Liz is a driving force for change and an invaluable resource to Cabarrus County Schools. As one colleague put it perfectly, "Liz is the most gentle soul, yet the most fierce advocate." It is with deep gratitude and great pride that we recognize Liz Batson as our 2025 School Social Worker of the Year. Congratulations, Liz, you are so deserving.
of the Year recognition, and we have Dr. Michael Williams.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. Last month, we were fortunate to welcome the leadership team from the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching to celebrate Summer Espinoza's finalist status in the North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year competition. This month, we welcome that leadership team back with more good news. At this time, I'd like to ask the representatives from NCAT and Ms. Espinoza, and any members of the Odell Administrative Team who might be here to come forward to introduce themselves and share this wonderful announcement.
Tonight is my honor to introduce you to one of the brightest lights in education, not just in this district, but across the state. Please join me in celebrating Summer Espinoza, kindergarten teacher at WR Odell Primary School, and the NCAT 2025 Boroughs Welcome Fund, North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year. From the first moment you step into Ms. Espinoza's classroom, it becomes immediately clear that it's not just a place for learning, it's a place where children are celebrated and inspired. She begins and ends each day with a greeting. "Good morning, I'm happy you're here," she tells each student, and at days end, every child leaves with a hug and those powerful words, "I love you." In Summer's words, "If my students know that they are loved and cared for, they will feel safe at school." When a student feels safe, they can then begin to love to learn. It's this nurturing philosophy that underpins everything in her classroom, from cultural quilts made by families, to wow-work walls, to voice-and-choice learning centers. Her goal is simple and powerful. Create a place where every child belongs and where their learning is driven by joy. Oh, if we could keep that from kindergarten on. Summer creates hands-on lessons that bring content to life. Could be a St. Patrick's Day scavenger hunt led by a mischievous leprechaun, could be real leaves from the playground to learn math. She builds these moments that anchor deep learning. Her principles shared, through her thoughtful communication strategies, Summer creates a nurturing and effective learning environment. She celebrates small achievements and empowers students to feel confident and successful. And that connection extends to families. Parents receive weekly newsletters, Happy Mill. One parent wrote, "Never in our years with the school system has one of our children had a teacher so in tune with the needs of her students." Summer gave Nora and her classmates a magical year. Y'all, this is her second year of teaching, isn't that just amazing? What sets Summer apart, especially as a beginning teacher, is her profound self-awareness and commitment to growth. She says this to future teachers, "You won't remember the hard days, you'll remember the smiles." The day a child tells you, "I had the best day ever," that's the reason you keep going. She reflects daily, seeks feedback from colleagues and students alike, and models what it is like to be a lifelong learner. Today, we had the pleasure of visiting Espinoza's classroom. Her classroom management was incredible. And y'all, I taught high school English for a long time, I've never seen anything like the classroom management I saw today in that kindergarten classroom. And guess what her student said as Emily and I were leaving? "I love you." It matters, it made a difference. We left smiling, and I thought, "How awesome to end your day that way." Sorry, I'm so sorry. Summer makes nervous five-year-olds fall in love with writing, turns weather lessons into meteorologist video productions, and embodies everything we hope for in the future of education. She's not only a teacher of content, she's a teacher of hearts, of confidence, and community. Please join me in congratulating Summer Espinoza, the NCAT 2025 Boroughs Welcome Fund, North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year.
we have Mrs. Jenny Fast. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Board Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. I'm Jenny Fast, District AIG Specialist and Governor's School Coordinator. It is my great pleasure to recognize an exceptional group of students from Cabarrus County Schools who have earned the prestigious honor of being selected for the North Carolina Governor's School this summer. This year, 18 outstanding students from our district, I believe total we had over 2,500 students apply across the state, have been invited to participate in this distinguished program. They represent a wide array of disciplines, including academic, arts, and world languages. The North Carolina Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically and intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. Being selected is a significant achievement that reflects not only a student's talent, but also their passion for learning, creativity, and commitment to excellence. We are incredibly proud of these students, their families, and the educators who have supported them on their journey. Please join me in congratulating our Governor's School selectees as they prepare to represent Cabarrus County at the state level this summer. I will call their name, and we have some that are here with us in attendance, they will come forward. Cameron Swain from Cabarrus Health Science Institute. Malani Delgado. Massin Siddiki, Cabarrus Early College. Hershini Belusu-Cox Mill. Sharenia Jagarala-Mudi, Hickory Ridge. Shayna Chenwali, Northwest Cabarrus. Saitanvi Balu, Cox Mill. Shivin Nagaban, Cabarrus Health Science Institute. Anshii Kamdar, Concord High School. Ridvik Dandee, Concord. Tanushree Ara, Cox Mill High School. Akshuta Muthukumar, Cox Mill. Anna Kramer, Cox Mill. Zion Richardson, West Cabarrus. Avi Deschmuk, Cox Mill. Ashwarya Vasheetha, Hickory Ridge. Caleb Seum, who is unfortunately sick, but his mom is here from West Cabarrus to represent
Okay, we'll move on to our next recognition, which is the NCHSAA State Champions recognition. Do we have Mr. Brian Tyson with us? There he is. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Board members, and Dr. Kapicki. We've got a special group here, it's the last of the recognitions of the night for winner state champions for the High School Athletic Association. We didn't have any basketball state champions for a change, you know, but we do have plenty of other state champions, and we're proud to recognize them tonight. I will start off with swimming, individual swimming. Lily Hermans. Lily, if you'll just step forward a little bit. All right, Lily is from Concord High School, and she is a junior, and Lily actually won two state championships at the High School Athletic Association State Championship Meet. Lily's time in the 50-yard was 23.85 seconds, and her 100-yard time was 51.97 seconds, and both are new school records for Concord High School. And to top that, Lily was also selected as the 3A Most Valuable Swimmer of the NCHSAA Meet. Congratulations, Liz. Next, we have a returner to the stage tonight, Abby Cronin of Central Cabarrus High School. Abby is a six-time state champion, three individual state titles. Three individual state titles in the backstroke, and also a three-time relay state champion. So Abby is quite the swimmer. She holds numerous records, school records and conference records, and Abby will continue her swimming career at Akron University next year, and plans to major in graphic design. So congratulations again, Abby. So congratulations again, Abby. Central Cabarrus also had a male swimmer, Telus Bumgarner, who could not be here tonight. He's a star pitcher on the baseball team, and I guess Coach Boss wouldn't let him off tonight for recognition, but he did an excellent job as well. He won the hundred-yard freestyle in forty-seven-point-seven-two seconds. So congratulations to Telus as well. Now for the Swimming Relay Team State Championship that Central Cabarrus won. This is the second time in three years that they have won the two-hundred-yard freestyle, and they won this with a record time of one minute forty-point-one seconds. So quite a great time there. So team members are Abby Cronin, obviously. We went over her accomplishments. And we have Lala Johns. Lala, she is a senior at Central, so she is also a three-time state champion in the relay. Lala plans to attend Georgia Southern University this coming fall and plans to major in mechanical engineering. So got the smarts also. So Audrey Wolf is next. Audrey is a senior. She's also she's also a three-time relay team champion, and she plans on attending Wingate University and studying nursing next year. So congratulations to you, Audrey. And last but not least is the little sister of the crew, is Leah Cronin. She is a sophomore, and Leah will be returning next, the next two years to Central Cabarrus and will be having to lead their swim program there, unless I guess she gets into portal or something like that and somebody nabs you up. But we look forward to seeing what you can do for the next two years as well, Leah. And thank you, and congratulations to you. And I'd also like to note that Central Cabarrus's girls' team was the state 3A runner-up as a team. And I couldn't talk her into coming up front, but Coach Maggie Ho Miller is here as well, and I'd like to recognize her. All right, next, we have individual state champions in indoor track. And we had one of those this year, and that is Cameron Tucker. Cameron, raise your hand. Cameron is a junior at JM Robinson High School, and he won the fifty-five-meter event. Cameron is also an excellent and standout defensive back on the football team and also participates in outdoor track as well in the sprint events. So congratulations, Cameron, on your accomplishment. And last but not least is a student that was absent tonight. He couldn't be here. Now, he was here last year. He won a state champion last year as well, and that is Colt Campbell. And he won the individual state championship in wrestling in the one-hundred-and-seventy-five-pound weight class, and I felt like we did need to recognize him again, even though he couldn't be here. He is a back-to-back state champion. He was fifty-five and oh this year. He, all fifty-five wins this year were by texts or by pens. So quite impressive. And he has a career record of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight wins versus only nineteen losses. He's been undefeated since his sophomore year and has a winning streak of one-hundred-and-twenty-one matches. He is currently the record holder of wins for Cabarrus County Schools and is sixth all-time with the NCHSAA. So quite an accomplishment there, and he will continue his wrestling career at Appalachian State University next year. Pretty good school there. So in closing, I would like to congratulate you folks on the designation of being a state champion, as that is something that nobody can ever take away from you. And I'd also like to thank you for representing your school and Cabarrus County Schools and your family and our community in a most positive way, both on the court, in the pool, off the court, and in the classroom. So thank you so much, and congratulations.
All right, we've had some very well-deserved recognitions tonight. Congratulations to all those that were recognized. We're going to move on to Section Five, which is approval of minutes. We've had three meetings last month, and the minutes for those meetings on March 3rd, March 24th, and March 31st are we're on board docs for your review. Did we have any changes? If not, I would need a motion and a second to approve our minutes. Okay, a motion by Mr. Treadaway. Second by Mr. Mills. All in favor of approving the minutes for the three meetings in March? Say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? All right, so our minutes have been approved. We will move on, which is Board Chair and Superintendent comments. Board Chair comments. I did see that our Commissioner Laura Lindsay did sneak into the room, so welcome to the meeting. And also, our SRO for the night, I don't know where he was, but he's patrolling our building and keeping it safe. We have Colin Reinhardt, which is the SRO for Harris Road Middle School. We thank him for being here as well. So my comments, I'll try to be brief on those. So tonight, we really want to celebrate a milestone that has shaped the health and success of students across our county for the last twenty-five years. We've had a dedicated school nurse in every Cabarrus County school, which is a pretty incredible achievement and is really the result of a partnership between the Cabarrus Health Alliance, our county government, and our school system. Since 1999, school nurses have been a steady presence in our buildings. Quiet heroes who respond to emergencies, manage chaotic, chronic health conditions, educate students, and offer daily care with compassion and professionalism. In the 2023-2024 school year alone, nurses supported nearly a hundred thousand school visits across all of our schools. A school nurse does more than just provide care. They build trust, create safe learning environments, and ensure every child is healthy and ready to learn. And we've, as a parent, have experienced that with children with food allergies. Very grateful for our students, school nurses. So to all of our school nurses, thank you for your dedication, and here's to twenty-five years of impact and many more to come. Secondly, we've had our Legal Affairs Committee meeting. We had a conflict this month, so we need to move that meeting to April 22nd. It'll be Oh, finance committee. Actually, just give me just a second. So I have, the Finance Committee is moving to what was the date for that? Twenty twenty Sorry, the notes here were Any idea? The which committee? Legal Affairs is this one's name. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And that's pretty much all I had for Board Chair comments. So we will move forward to 6.02, which is Superintendent comments.
Thank you. I apologize for that confusion that our committee dates mixed up there, Mr. Walter. First and foremost, we'd like to thank everyone who joined us last Friday at the Gibson Mill Market for Youth Arts Month Festival. Always a fantastic evening filled with creativity, talent, and community spirit. And we're very proud to showcase the incredible work of our student artists, our musicians, and our performers from across Cabarrus County Schools. These events remind us how powerful the arts can be and how inspiring they are to the young minds and bringing people together in our community. Special thank you to our teachers, staff, families, and community partners, especially Mr. Bart Tolbert, who really organizes that every year and does a fantastic job with it. So we thank him for his work on that. And also the Gibson Mill Market for being a partner with us and providing a beautiful venue for our students to shine. So we're grateful for that support, and we look forward to celebrating that creativity that our students embrace and engage in all year long. Please mark your calendars. May 21st, 22nd, and 23rd is our graduation in Cabarrus County. That will soon be upon us as the school year is quickly going by. We want to make sure to remind folks that you can find information on our website, but our graduation again is May 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Reminder to all of our parents that the Parent Engagement Survey is now available on our website. Please look that up on our website, and please take the ten to fifteen minutes it takes to complete that survey. We really do seek your input and the feedback you give us. It does help guide us in terms of our goals and our ambitions for the years that are coming ahead of us so that we can plan appropriately. And that feedback is welcome, and needed, and wanted. And a reminder that our schools will be closed on Friday, April 18th. And also, our students will be out of school on Monday, April 24th, for Staff Development Day. The early colleges will operate as normal on Monday, the 21st. And then the last two points are the Student and Family Wellness Forum. That will be taking place. The Student and Family Wellness Forum to Support Mental Health Awareness Month is on April 23rd from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at West Cabarrus High School. We will be welcoming Chris Heron, a former professional basketball player as this year's keynote speaker. If you have some time, would like to participate and go through this great event, we would encourage you to come out to West Cabarrus on April 23rd at 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Then lastly, I know it takes a while, and I appreciate the patience of the board and the community to recognize our kids. But obviously, we're a large district, and a lot of great things are going on. We just spent the last hour, and I hope that it wasn't lost on anyone that was here to understand. We talk about greatness. We talk about the wonderful things going on. I am consistently and constantly telling our folks to tell our story, to share our narrative with the community at large, and to make sure that we emphasize that there is way more good going on in our school system than anything else. Our kids achieve. They achieve at the local level. They achieve at the state level, and they achieve at the national level. And I want to make sure that we understand that fully when these students come up here and they're acknowledged and recognized every month because they represent our community. They are our future leaders. It's why I always say when I speak to the community, I have no fear of the future. I see the wonderful leaders who are in our school systems today. We will graduate twenty-six-hundred of them in the next month. And repeatedly, I am impressed and awed by the talent, the skill, the compassion, the collaboration, the intelligence that exists in our school system. I thank our teachers for always working with them and getting the best out of them. But just don't miss the opportunity when you see our kids to praise them for their accolades, for all the good things they're doing in our school system, and also our teachers, and acknowledge them for the hard work that they're doing. I know you do it. I just want to emphasize how great we really are and all the wonderful things that are going on here. Too often, we get caught up in the negative and the narrative that's out there that we're not accomplishing anything, or not doing anything with the young folks of today. And I can say, that's just wrong. Our kids achieve at the highest levels, and they represent Cabarrus County in outstanding fashion. It's humbling to see them come up and be acknowledged every month. And it's even more humbling when you go into the schools and you see the work that our teachers are doing and the performance that our kids are doing. In the last week alone, just the various things on a Saturday, I saw all of our board members over the last couple of days at various events that at every single one of them, I saw students. I saw teachers. Whether it be the job fair, whether it be the Arts Festival, whether it be one of the plays going on, our students and our teachers are everywhere, and they're representing our county in outstanding fashion. So we have a lot to be proud of, and I really don't want that message to get lost on anyone. Emphasize the positive. Tell our story, tell our narrative about the great things going on in Cabarrus County Schools. We have a lot to be proud of in our school system. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. So our next section is guest speakers. And guest speakers addressing the board tonight. We had one that signed up. They've been given the expectations for speaking. They have three minutes. And I have Chantel Berry on a topic of salary inequities and the salary study. Welcome to the podium. Let us know when you're ready.
Testing? Okay. I'm ready. Good evening, board members, new board members that haven't had a chance to say hello to. Board Chair Walter, Vice Chair Treadaway? Vice Chair Treadaway? I'm sorry, my apologies. Vice Chair Greg Mills, Vice Chair, thank you. Superintendent Kapicki. I stand here before you to implore you to please look into the salary study that was conducted last June. I was a proud Cabarrus County leader from 2022 to 2024, and the salary disparity affected me directly. It was stated at the February 3rd board meeting, and I appreciate Board Member Pam Escobar for bringing this up, at the one-hour-seven-minute mark, thirty-seven seconds, dialogue between she and Mr. Penn that Cabarrus County Schools had no knowledge of the salary disparity, and this is not true. I brought this to the attention of Michael Williams, brought this to the attention of the superintendent. Also, some of the board members that were sitting in their chairs last year, and it was ignored. I was grossly underpaid for the two years that I served as a principal, and it was not corrected. I was employed through June 2024, and actually, my salary was cut several times between the 2024, the ending of my term, without any explanation, without any thought or consideration. I served proudly at three school sites, without question, and I'm just sad about the inequity that took place for me. North Carolina Department of Public Instruction makes it very clear what the salary schedule should be. I have copies of those for the board also. I served at schools that met growth, which should have been on a G-level salary schedule. I then led Wyancoph to exceeding growth, which is an E-level salary schedule, but I was continuously paid at a base monthly salary for several months with no explanation at all, even after I emailed and writing, contacted Michael Williams several times, asked about it. I finally received an email, also after asking for my contract. I never received a principal contract when everyone else did. I finally received one a year later, without explanation. I was told I did not need a contract and to trust that I was being paid correctly. Well, that trust went out the window. I need answers. I am imploring this. I was scheduled to speak last week. I sent in requests to speak and was denied the right to speak. I also sent in my request through certified mail and was denied. May I give you all?
Could you give that to Lori, and Lori will pass that out to us? Okay, thank you, Ms. Berry, for bringing All right, moving on to the next section is Section Eight Reports. We have committee reports from board members. And I'm sure we've had a lot of things going on for the last month that maybe we can use and get an update from, but I will start on Pam. You want to start, or you want us, Melanie? I guess it's easiest to go across, if that's okay. Melanie, do you have any committee reports?
We had a meeting today with the Curriculum Committee, and whereas we're not necessarily vetting any new curriculum, we are learning about all the different programs within the school system. And discussion was had about how to improve those, how to get the word out. So I appreciate all the ladies who work on this, and it was very informative, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Freeman, Ms. Escobar.
I was also in that meeting today, and some of the things that we talked about today that I think might be of interest to the public is that the Cabarrus Virtual Academy is this great resource that we have within our school system in which many people can participate in. And so one of the pushes that they're going to be doing this summer is trying to reach out to homeschool parents because you can take two courses and to help supplement what you're already doing. And for kids who have, need flexible schedules, it's a great opportunity. Also, if you need the expertise in science and math that maybe you can't provide at home, you know, we're a resource. So I just thought that that was very helpful. Other committees that I'm on, Transportation had their first meeting last month, and what we talked about there for the public was this, the new transportation form, which if you're a parent in the school system, you are aware that we are not doing it by paper anymore. We're doing it electronically. The deadline was yesterday, the 13th, but I'm sure if you had trouble filling that out, you can reach out to your out, you can reach out to your schools and get help. But what was encouraging about that meeting was all the participants in it within Transportation who really gave a lot of ideas. They got a presentation from Dr. Bowers, and I just, I really appreciated the dialogue and the dedication because obviously, this was outside of their regular time that they meet. So it was a good first meeting, and we're also meeting again this week. And then lastly, for me, interns. We're almost done the school year, guys. It's crazy. So the interns have done a lot of work this semester. They did their service projects this month. They had two different opportunities where they could volunteer and get involved. So a lot of them wrapped that up. And I want to thank Mr. Farr for giving a presentation about communications within the school district last week. And for those who are interested, who are listening, rising juniors and seniors, you too can be a Board of Education intern. The application is open to the end of the month, and the hardest part of the application is getting those recommendations. You need recommendations from two teachers and also a recommendation from your principal. So if you're even thinking about it, make sure you go out and get those recommendations sooner rather than later. That deadline, again, like I said, is at the end of the month, and there is an online form for that. And you can find that on our website, under the Board of Education tab will be a link to that form. So just, I really appreciate all the hard work of the interns this semester, and you'll get to meet them next month.
What were their service projects? What was the service?
So they helped at the Hispanic Family Resource Fair. We worked with the school social workers for several months, talking about the needs for that, and then also volunteering for that and getting donations for the event, which I will say that they came through. We have extras for next year, all the paper plates you could ever think of. So just, you know, those kinds of details. And then if they weren't able to participate in that, they volunteered last week for Special Olympics, which was on Wednesday and Thursday of last week.
That's good. And I also appreciate the update on the Virtual Academy and this for the rest of the board. Would we be interested in getting a presentation on all the options that we have with our Virtual Academy? Because I don't think everybody's as familiar with what they offer. Is that something that you'd be interested in? Okay, thank you, Pam. All right, Greg, you have any?
Sure. My two committees are the Policy Committee and Legislative Committee. The Policy Committee has got about fifteen to twenty people on it. It's a big committee. It's very active. And you get regular reports on the fruits of that committee's work from Dr. Ward just about every month. So I won't go too more into depth on that. The other thing is Legislative Committee. That's a brand-new committee. That is, we plan to meet quarterly on that one. And so the next meeting of the Legislative Committee is going to be on 4/22, and those are available to the public. So reach out if you'd like to participate.
Thanks, Greg. For my committee, this was the Finance Committee, which we've had an update at our last meeting on that. And then Collaboration Chairs and Vice Chairs with the large districts around the Charlotte area. We had a meeting with them earlier in the month, and a lot of their concerns is about legislative, what's going on in legislature and proposed bills. And I think what came out of that is essentially be active and be active with your local representatives, know what's going on, and if there's issues that affect the schools, to make sure that they know about that. So move over to Sam.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing to add to the comments that have been made so far.
Okay, thank you. Catherine?
Pam and I also attended two Calendar Committee meetings, which a lot goes into putting the calendar together for the 26, 27 year. And there's some very well-representation on there between teachers, parents, admin, and at all three levels, the elementary, the middle, and the high. So we will continue working on that. Also, Sam and I did the Legal Affairs Committee, which we will discuss that and give our recommendation in a little bit. And then we have Safety Committee this week.
Thank you. Ms. Lancaster?
I am the liaison for the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. And at the last meeting, they are in the middle of Bookapalooza, and they have distributed over six thousand, sixteen thousand books so far. They do need volunteers for this last push. They have about sixty-three hundred more books to give out. So if you can help with that, just go to their website, Cabarrus County Education Foundation, and you can help prep the books, set it for events, and then act as ambassadors and give out the books at the elementary schools.
Thank you. Anything else that we didn't catch? All right, we'll move on to our next item, which is approval of our Consent Agenda. So we've had a number of things we discussed last week that we all agreed that should be added to the Consent Agenda. So if we'd like to keep those on there, and we need a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda, or I need a discussion to remove anything?
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Pam, a second?
A second.
Sam? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve our Consent Agenda for the evening. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, our Consent Agenda has passed. So we will move on to our action items, and we have a number of those. So we will start with the big one, which is our adoption of our 25, 26 budget. And we have Mr. Penn back to the podium. Again, we've discussed this a couple of times now, so we've gotten an opportunity to the public to provide feedback, and we've sent some questions. So you want to kind of give us a quick summary? Don't have to go through the whole thing again, but...
No, I thought that might be the best choice is not to go through every slide one more time. So you've seen this four times now already, right?
Essentially, the overview and the summary would be great.
So let's do this. So for the benefit of those who are seeing this for the first time tonight, we do put together a budget that is 159 days from when we started. Tomorrow, when we present the Board of Commissioners, it'll be 160. As I reminded my team, I think we're about five months away from starting the process all over again. So, yeah. But just to give everybody an idea, when we talk about budget, we talk about a continuation budget, we talk about an expansion budget, and we talk about a capital budget. Those are the three main pieces. So when we look at the continuation budget for the 25, 26 year as it compares to 24, 25, this is laid out the way the county actually appropriates the money to us. The gross change is 15.6 million. From that, we then remove other revenue sources that are not directly tied to local taxes, fines and forfeitures, interest on our investments, special revenue, which you'll see on the next slide, I think it's an important part of the story, knocks that down to an increase of 11.4 or 12.7 percent. We've also captured at the bottom of the slide, certain pass-through costs that we administer here in the district as well, the charter school funding, Special Olympics, and the park maintenance. So why is revenue an important part of the story? For those of you who are seeing it for the first time, fines and forfeiture revenue is down dramatically this year. We're forecasting that to continue. I do have a meeting with county staff tomorrow to go through some additional detail, so hopefully I'll have information to share at the Finance Committee meeting later this month. Interest is a function of lower cash balances to events invest, but higher overall interest rates, higher than we expected. Medicaid reimbursements, I've mentioned this a few times this year, is impacting the 24, 25 budget. We expect it to impact 25, 26 as well. Has nothing to do with Medicaid proposed changes or programmatic activity within Medicaid, but rather, it's a lack of state personnel that are able to approve and audit these payments as we submit them. We are currently owed about $2 million from the state at this point and growing each quarter. We then get into things like sales tax refunds. That is pretty stable, so we're now including that as a revenue source within our budgetary process. Indirect cost recovery, that's the other big bucket. That is where we charge off indirect costs for our federal grants. Fairly stable going into 25, 26 compared to this year. But overall, a drop of 2.8 million in revenue. That essentially translates to if I had zero expense changes, I would still need a 3.1 percent increase just to offset the change in the drop in revenue. So when we look at a continuation budget, it is staffing versus things. Staffing, you'll see here that we proposed a net reduction in the amount of people that we have attributable to local staff. That does not mean layoffs. I need to continue to stress that for those that might be watching that for the first time. This is a consolidation of activity that reflects a very intense school allotment process, trying to allot much more closely to what the state gives us in terms of funding. And you'll see the impact based on the salaries and also on the associated benefits that are associated with those. For those of you wondering why the supplement number is so high, the 19.3 million that you see there, that is all the supplements that we have within the district. They all have to be paid out of local funds. You cannot pay supplements out of state funds. We then break down our classified staff, and again, classified are the folks that don't need a teaching license to do their day-to-day job, into three different buckets, our facilities and maintenance area, our technology area, and then all other staff. And all other staff includes both staff that are in the buildings and stuff, and people that are within this building as well. Out of that, 212, there's roughly 68 FTEs that work within this building. There's been some historical data that was published earlier today in board docs and on our website regarding some of the questions that came up along those lines. But between classified staff and the certified staff, we're looking at total FTEs from local funding of 517, about a 4 percent increase versus where we are for this year. Okay. Moving very quickly through this, again, we've spent a lot of time discussing some of these line items, but again, for the benefit of the people that are here for the first time tonight hearing it, when we look at the non-personnel pieces of instructional, it's a $1.6 million increase. In effect, all of that boils down to the 420 million that you see at the top, sorry, the 420,000 you see at the top of this page, and the 1.2 million that you see for insurance. Everything else basically nets to zero in terms of increases and decreases. But those are the two main drivers that we see going into next year. Property casualty insurance, certainly an impact of Helene and the changes that we made to the program. Utility is a function of both proposed rate increases and our activity so far this year that we're observing. Okay? When we talk about a continuation budget for facilities, one of the things that we're trying to address within this budget cycle is the ongoing need to make repairs within our buildings. These are the kind of repairs that cannot be deferred back. They have to be made at the time that they are incurred. So you'll see the major increase in the building maintenance and repair line at the top. About halfway down, you'll see an increase in maintenance repair supplies. Those are our tradespeople going out and actually getting the materials to do the repairs. And then within the all other, which is like a breakout on the right, projects that we track on an active basis below $5,000. So there's a lot that's happening within the facilities and maintenance space that frankly, I thought I adequately addressed in last year's budget and did not. We continue to incur a lot of costs within facilities maintenance. It is an indirect driver of this year's deficit that we have. So we're trying to solve this so that we don't continue to invest in that in a way that's inappropriate next year, get the number right going into 25, 26. Within the continuation budget, you then have a non-personnel piece associated with technology. The biggest change year-over-year going into next year's budget is the computer lease that you see there on the top line, computer software. And then we've broken out the 281,000 into the box below. The biggest piece in terms of the $50,000 year-over-year change is some additional training around cybersecurity to make sure our networks are as secure as they can be going forward. Expansion requests, there's only two. They're interrelated. A student and safety specialist to try to take away some of the 24/7 nature of the job as it's being performed right now, and a psychological services specialist where we have somebody who's helping to oversee the 25 or 26 folks that we have out in the schools and providing guidance and support to those folks as they do their day-to-day jobs. Okay. Capital, I'm going to move through fairly quickly as well. The three main buckets of capital are the smaller things, generally less than $25,000. We have maintenance projects between 25,000 and 499,000. And then the bigger projects, what they call CIP or Capital Improvement Program, over 500,000, and generally, that's where much of our school construction and a lot of our equipment needs fall into as well. So we've talked about in the past, we usually get $1,020,000 to pay-as-you-go within the county's government structure. It's not debt-funded. This has been a fairly reliable source of revenue to the district for several years. And you'll see the breakout of how we allocate that. There's always a request for more dollars than we have available here, so we try to make sure we're trying to fit in as what we can. I will point out that the play-based learning furniture for $150,000 will go away next year. This is the last year that we need to complete out that program. So we'll be able to allocate that money towards something else in the 26, 27 year. Apologize again for the I chart. We are tracking a total of 804 different projects. Within the 25,000 or 499,000 space, you'll see the year on the left that it first became identified or is anticipated. So it's a total of 804 with a combined value of 206. The 12 disciplines across the top, what we then ask for is the top three projects within each of those. You'll see the dollar values that are associated here, 36 with a combined value of 10.1 million. You'll see on the next couple of pages, the actual breakouts of those projects, and there's more detail in the appendix that we've included with the presentation as well. But again, it's going project by project, the top 36, and again, that 10.1 million. When we get into school construction, you'll see that there's the new elementary school. I've pointed out in the past that you're probably used to seeing a figure of 50.6 million for new elementary schools. We've already received funding from the county of 1.5 million. The 49.1 is the balance to complete out that project. And the replacement high school of 130 million, those are the top two that we've identified out of the long-term facilities capital plan that we've now also included in the appendix as a marker for what the board reviewed back in March as an indicator for why these funds are needed. Within the equipment maintenance and replacement space, the biggest need there, and these are prioritized in order, is a $4 million for student Chromebooks. That would be 8,000 devices at about $475 each, all in. Security cameras is a persistent request that we're going to see for probably the next two years before it steps down to a much lower number. 850,000 proposed for 25, 26. It was 866,000 for 24, 25. Last year, for the first time in the 24, 25 cycle, we started replacing some of our older interactive displays with what are called Promethean boards. This would include another tranche of those. And as I mentioned, we've been cascading down some of the older equipment to make sure that we're taking advantage of everything that still has a little bit of service life left, that there's an opportunity to move it to a different school until all the schools have been fully replaced. And for the last time, excuse me, the last item on the list, for the first time, it's made it onto this list, is a paging and intercom system. So we're starting to see in some of our older schools, there are sections of the building where paging and intercom systems are not longer working. It becomes a safety hazard, obviously, for the kids and for the staff. So we're proposing getting on a replacement cycle of those, total of eight sites, at basically 100,000 per site. So if we're successful, the goal would be, again, to get on some of a replacement cycle where that stays on the list for a couple of years and allows us to complete out that work of doing the replacements where they're needed. We talk about capital improvement projects, and again, these are the bigger projects above a half a million dollars each. There's a total of 92 that we're tracking right now with a combined value of almost 239 million. We propose the top 10, which is consistent with the approach that we take each year through the budgetary cycle. So the top 10, you can see them here, and there's more detail again in the appendix, combined value of 42.8 million dollars. So when we talk about a summary and how do we roll all this up, you'll see the net continuation request of 101.6. The expansion request, the two items we talked about, just under 200,000. Capital outlet, $1,020,000 that's sort of persistently funded for us. The smaller projects at 10.1. New construction at 179.1. Equipment at just under 7 million. The bigger maintenance projects we just talked about for 42.7, almost 42.8, I should say. So the total capital portion of the request is just under 240 million, and the total that we're proposing here on the page is 341.8. Okay. With that, be happy to take questions.
So that does or does not include the charter school pass-through?
Does not include the charter.
Does not include the charter.
That is correct.
All right, so board members, again, we've been presented with this three times. You've all taken a lot of time going through it yourselves, asking questions. So it's really our last chance to really understand what we're voting for because really, we're going to be asked to defend it and to ask the county commissioners essentially explain what we're asking for. So I want to make sure that everybody has their opportunity to get their questions answered, and we really do need to move, approve it at the end of this discussion. And so we'll start, well, you tell me who wants to start.
Should we have a motion and a second first before discussion?
Unless it's related to his presentation.
Okay.
Yes. Do we have anything?
I'm willing to make that motion so that we can have conversation.
Is there anything related to the presentation? Okay, yes, please make a motion. One more, a second.
I move that we approve the budget as presented.
Okay, I do have a motion by Mr. Treadaway. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a second by Mrs. Moore, so let's have a discussion. Anybody can start? Pam?
Thank you for the fourth time. I appreciate all the work that is put into this. I'm looking forward to your presentation tomorrow with our county commission. Obviously, very curious what they think and how they feel. I do just want to highlight again, which we did last meeting, which is cutting those 60 positions. I recognize that they're not attached to people, but the work will be gone. Schools will feel different. Our other people who are working will have to pick up... Our other people who are working will have to pick up whatever slack is missing. And so I just want to highlight that this is a sacrifice. This is, while this budget, the continuation budget, is an increase, we are significantly decreasing the local paid workers, and that is, that's a, that was a big undertaking. How you figured out how to do that is tricky, and I just want to make sure that people realize that we're not, the expansion that we're asking for is minimal, but very, very necessary. We need those two positions, and I don't think it's a huge ask when you think about what we're doing. Those 60 positions is a lot. So I just, I just want to make sure that it's clear to the public. Am I missing anything from that?
No, I don't think, I don't think, I was meant more as a statement, right? Not a question?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Dr. Kapiki would like to...
Yeah, so they're real, those 60 are, they're real positions that we cut back on, so I'm going to be clear about that, and that's the tune of $3,913,253. So when we say, they are real people in real positions. Now, no one's lost their job. Everyone's keeping their job, but we looked at the allotments and where we could cut back without having to reduce employment or lay anybody off, okay? So everyone still is employed, but I just want to be real clear that the $203,913,253 is what those positions cost. So just so we're clear on that, that is a reduction in our force because as we went through the positions, we said, okay, is this one necessary? Is this one necessary? Can we do this? Can we ever, can we reallocate the responsibility somewhere else? And that's what we kind of did. So we kept people employed, but we reduced, we reduced the workload by 64 positions.
Further discussion?
So you all have already identified the 60 positions you're going to eliminate?
Yeah, so in the budget, those 60 positions were worked through with human resources, Mr. Penn and John Legrand, as we allocated our positions to the schools. We looked at where, if there was retirement or temporary contract, do we need to bring it back? Do we need to bring that position back? And that's how we got to number 60, by looking at the temporary contracts and looking at attritions either through retirements or someone leaving that particular position and moving on somewhere else. So that's kind of how we did that.
Well, I don't want to hold up this process because I know we have to get it to the county commissioners, but that's the biggest item of the feedback that I've received from the public, the 60 positions. People are concerned about that. So when we get feedback from the county commissioners, will there be an opportunity for conversations then to look at the positions or just more conversation on the area? Because that is the area where I've received most feedback. And Pam, maybe you have also, people are concerned about that, how that will affect the classrooms.
So I can say to you, and Dr. Williams can speak to this too as well, if he, if I'm not giving this exactly correct, but I know that I am, but you can add to it. Working with Dr. Williams, working with Mr. Legrand, working with Mr. Penn, and working with our principals, working with the two women and the one gentleman, you see Mr. Palmer, Dr. Parker, and Mrs. Blessington, and going through the allotment process, they were involved in that as well to make sure that our schools were fully staffed and we weren't hurting anything in the classroom. So I can say that we didn't. Now, does that make us thin? I don't think it makes us thin, but it makes us, we're efficient to what we need to have in the classrooms, okay? So I also want to say, we're asking for a 12.69% increase, but what I'm saying, what we said the other night is, this is people in programs if you don't fund this. You're going to have to go back again. We don't have, there's nothing to cut. I mean, I want to be real clear about that. Dr. Williams, did I miss anywhere? Mr. Penn, am I missing, am I saying anything out of line or inappropriate or?
No.
Not inappropriate, but am I, is what I'm saying making sense?
And again, just to stress in terms of how the allotment process has played out, we've been using existing enrollment, we've been using projected enrollment, we've been using what the students have actually turned in for what their course preferences are for next year, and we've left open the possibility that if our actual enrollment exceeds in any of these buildings, we will address that through the addition of positions, right? It's not like this is a one-and-done. We expect, as we actually see our enrollment develop over the course of the summer and it's the beginning of the semester, there are places we may need to put back a teacher.
Those would be state-funded, they wouldn't be local?
It would depend on where it is, right? Because there's a possibility that would come through in the allotment interhares, right? The funding interhares model that we're now subject to, but it would depend on where it lands because of the way that the state allot versus the way we budget.
Dr. Williams, anything to add?
What I would like to add, we use mathematical formulas to land on where those allotments are at the schools. We are mathematically allotted appropriately based on the projections for the '25, '26 school year. Our demographer came in a little lower on her projection of growth than she has the last couple of years. Our, her, while she is brilliant and gets us within about 1.5% of where we actually land, we were about 1.5% short last year, and we did have some places where we left some schools over-allotted on the 40th day because they, it was going to be a major disruption to that schedule while that teacher, while that allotment really did not need to be at that school. As you well know, rescheduling a master schedule 40 days into the year is never good, right? So there were places last year where we remained above the, where the actual enrollment landed against the projection because that's what was the right thing to do for children and teachers in that moment. This year, we did come a little closer to where we made sure, she adjusted her projections appropriately. We allotted against those projections, and so what I would say is, I am not concerned about our ability to operate schools at this time. We allotted appropriate to the number of students who we believe are going to be in schools. To Mr. Penn's point, we will be watching very carefully because if we come in above where that projection is, we obviously would expect to receive additional funding for allotments there, and then we would adjust, we would adjust accordingly as those numbers come in. It is a little different approach than what's happened in years past where we allotted a little bit high and then tried to take back on day 40 if we could with attrition. We wanted to just be very careful this year, and so at this point, when I actually have class numbers that came in today, thanks to Mr. Sane, I'm able to look at high school master scheduling. I don't see anything in that high school master scheduling right now that causes me tremendous heartburn in terms of class sizes. I do see a few places where we're probably going to have to come back in if all of those children show up on the first day of school.
Does that answer your question, so we're clear?
So what we're hearing is staffing is priority?
Staffing is priority. I would, we're well-staffed, and I don't want to put anyone in a spot, but Dr. Parker, Mr. Palmer, Mrs. Blessing, anything to add to that that we may have not said, or you feel comfortable we're allotted appropriately in the schools as we stand today? And if we were to start school tomorrow, we would be fully allotted in terms of opening the doors? Okay. And I know those conversations are still taking place, we're still going through them. We're actually looking at the master schedules again this week, Mrs. Lancaster, look at those. So we continue, I don't want to say revising and doing revisions, but we're constantly looking at it and making sure that our numbers add up, that we're all on the same page, we're all aligned together. We met again this morning to go over this. I challenged Mr. Penn this week, and I asked for specifics and breakdowns of certain things to see with that contracted services today that's $4.6 million. I can tell you, 2.2 million of that is SROs. So these are big-ticket items that we need to have in the schools to make sure that we're efficient. So yes, we're looking at everything, and I know I'm kind of going on a little, but to be clear, we haven't cut anything that directly impacts the classroom.
Okay, but we're asking for an amount of money. We may get that, we may not, but we're trying to make sure that priority here is our staffing.
That's correct.
Because we need, we need people, we need our teachers, we need our support staff because it makes a big distinct impact on our kids.
That's correct. And with the money that we're asking for, and Mr. Penn and Dr. Williams, again, staffs what we are, the money we're asking for is the money we need to staff where we are right now, moving into next year for the '25, '26 school year. That's about as accurate as I can say it?
Yeah, based on what we know now, that's what the budget reflects.
Anyone else? Mr. Mills?
I'll just make one statement, maybe not necessarily a question, but the thing that bothers me, concerns me the most, is when we talk about aggressively cutting certified staff positions in order to sort of save money and cover the budget deficit and make the budget work for our county commissioners. I appreciate everything that you've done in that area to be as efficient as we can, but I've heard no conversation about what we've done to look at efficiency in other areas other than certified staff. And so that's just, if you've got an answer, I'd like to hear it, but if not, it's fine. It's just sort of my concern is I see the priority. I understand the reasoning. I don't understand why it's all falling apparently on teachers.
Well, what I would respond to that, Mr. Mills, great question. I would say that when you look at a budget, and Mr. Penn can give you the break, I'll percentage is better than I at this moment, but roughly 70 to 75% of your budget is going to be salary and benefits. So the obvious place to look for your largest amount of savings is going to be there. But again, you've got to be very strategic and careful as to what you cut there because you don't want to impact the classroom. And the reason why I mentioned the contracted services, I can tell you, they were the contracted services today, I looked at supplies and materials today, and I looked at the software. They were the last three things I wanted to review again, and that was the tune of four, eight, a little over $10 million, supposed to $11 million of the budget. So I'm not just looking at certified staff. I just used those three examples because they were the last three that I went through again today to review again to make sure we weren't missing anything. So we're not just looking at the cut staff, but I would say to you, in all honesty, that is the largest part of the budget. So you're going to get your biggest, not to be, not to throw a pun in there, but the biggest bang for your buck is going to be, that's where you're going to get your most, your most cost, right? And I just share with you that one example, when I talked about contracted services, roughly 50% of that is tied to our SROs, which is tied to personnel, right? But it's under a different function and object code, so, you know, we're not going to cut SROs, right? But I share with you that when you look at 4.6, well, where's that $4.6 million? Well, that's where you start breaking it down by function and object, saying, okay, where's that money? You know, there's just so much that goes into it that, you know, when you start looking at all of it, you can really get into minutia, and that's what we did. We just really drilled down into everything and said, okay, where can we maybe reduce some of the costs? It wasn't, the point I guess I'm trying to make in a long-winded way is, it wasn't just certified staff that we looked at, but I appreciate the question.
There was at least four rounds of reductions in non-personal areas before it even got to the board for the first time.
Sure, but we've created differentiation between people and things, right? So you're talking about cuts to things, and I'm talking about cuts to people. And when we're talking about cuts to people, it seems like that has been restricted to certified staff, which to my understanding is teachers.
Well, I guess I'm responding.
We have people that are paid out of local funds that are also classified staff, for instance, but I don't hear the same conversations happening around all the departments.
Well, the comment I heard was that we didn't look for efficiencies anywhere else.
I understand if I, if I wasn't clear enough on that. Thank you.
So to that, to that, to that point, Dr. Williams, on the classified?
Yeah, we did take a look. Obviously, has not come up as much as we've talked, as Mr. Penn has presented here to the board. We did optimize our staffing for classified staff as well. We were very careful to take a look at positions and where we staffed appropriately for those classified staff positions. We, what I would say there is, we were always staffed relatively thin in those positions as it was. When we staff for certified staff, we're going to match that mathematically against the number of students that are projected to be in the building, which allows us to, year-to-year, that's going to change depending on K3 class sizes. If a large third-grade class goes to fourth grade and a smaller kindergarten class size comes in, that's going to adjust a little bit there. We have elementary schools right now that are operating on three custodians, right? And for the square footage, that's where our allotment formulas sit to place them. No matter how many kids come to that school, it's going to take three custodians to operate that building. So what I would say is that we took a very close look at classified. We made adjustments where they were appropriate and where we could, but we also have to keep in mind that we were already staffed very tightly at the classified level going into this budget process. That's a, that's something that we did two years ago when Dr. Bush was in, three years ago when Dr. Bush was in the role with our previous CFO. That was one of the first places we looked several years ago. So I would say, part of the reason you're not hearing that is because some of that work had already been done. We did certainly take a look at it and optimize anywhere that we felt like we could.
Any further discussion questions? Just making sure we all understand what we're being asked to vote for. Going once? Going twice? All right, let's vote. So all in favor of the motion of approving the proposed 2025, '26 budget? Say aye or raise your hand, I guess. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that passes, so that'll be presented to the county commissioners tomorrow.
Tomorrow night. Thank you very much.
All right, so we're moving on to 10.2, which is the Legal Affairs Committee recommendation. And again, I want to really say personally, thank you to both Sam and Catherine for taking the time to really delve into our legal services and going through bills and learning how everything, everything works. It's a lot of time to figure that out, and for us as a board, it would take an awful lot of additional time. So they've done that for us. They've had a meeting, they've had, done a lot of research, and they are ready to make a presentation, a recommendation on what we should do in our current contract with our existing firm expires at the end of June.
Well, I'd like to say that I appreciate Dr. Kapiki meeting with us and going over the past history of our legal services and also sharing the expense reports of the last several years. We felt like it was important to get the feedback from staff who works directly with our attorneys, and I appreciate their time coming in. And just want to go over some of the things that we heard from them. First, and I think very important, is that they have had three different legal services over the past three years. So we heard that, you know, they would like to ask for some consistency because once you learn one style, it's time to learn a new style. Also, I heard that when they make a call to the attorneys, most of the time they answer. If they don't answer, they send a text to let you know when they will call you back, and that's important to me. Next, our William Ozenhauer is a graduate of Cabarrus County Schools, and we're very proud of him. He still lives in our district and has a lot of knowledge of our community, which is important when they call about a real estate question. He knows exactly what they're talking about. The next thing I heard is that they trust our attorneys. They trust their legal advice, which you probably don't hear that very often, but they did. Also, they shared the rankings for the last four years, and this last year, the rankings was significantly higher than the previous years, which says a lot about our attorneys, and we do appreciate you. And our recommendation is that we continue our agreement with our current, current legal counsel.
Okay, so we have a recommendation. I guess we would, we were intending to vote tonight, so it was on the action, so there would be, need to be at least a motion and a second so we can have some further discussion on the recommendation.
I prepared to make that motion that we continue our current legal representation through June of 2026. Yep.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Let's have a discussion. Opening that up to the floor. Greg?
Do we know how common it is for a school district to have, to contract with two different firms? I know that we've done that here several times now, and sometimes those are cooperative relationships and sometimes they're not. So far, this one seems to be good, but is that common?
Dr. Kapiki?
So I wouldn't speak to if it was common or not common, Mr. Mills. Again, another good question. I would say to you that there are districts in our state and in our region that use more than one firm, okay? So I don't think it's uncommon, but I wouldn't know if, I wouldn't say it's common, right? And I, my experience has been in my career that I have used more than one firm for different various reasons, whether it be, it could be, you could use one firm for negotiations, you could use one firm for real estate or contracts, one firm for EC services, so it's not uncommon. And I know I'm not making, this is, but I don't know that I would say, I don't want to use the word common to mislead you. Is that making sense?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So with this, with the two firms, is there a clear delineation about who takes what type of jobs, and is there ever a circumstance where both firms were being paid on the same case?
I would say no. I think the delineation is clear. Our staff understands exactly who to call, what our protocols are, and which, if it's Campbell, Shadley, or if it's Johnson, Allison, or they know exactly who to call and what to call. And... And there's no confusion.
Did you guys see that when you looked at the bills?
Yep, if I could. That's one thing, I think, that came out. The detail of the billing is extraordinary to me. Every minute is accounted for. And I, the problem with sharing that information is it would have to be heavily redacted, of course, but I was impressed with just the level of detail of who's doing what, where, when.
You want to follow, follow what? Okay, one more time with Dr. Kapiki and then?
As I sit here and think about it, Greg, it's not uncommon. Usually in firms, each, there's a set of lawyers that will be, have an area of specificity. So one lawyer may do the EC, one may do the contracts, et cetera. So our range right now is not unusual, just using two firms to do all of that work.
Okay, Ms. Freeman.
One thing I understood, and this may have been past discussions, was that there are a limited amount of legal firms that handle certain things. So we don't have a lot of moveability. I mean, real estate is pretty common and some of these other things, but EC law is extremely specified, and so we don't have, these people do really well in that, and that's another reason for staying with them, I think.
You guys want to respond to that?
I agree.
Well, in talking with the staff, they know who to call for what issue. They made that very clear.
Okay, I think Pam goes next to William, then if you want to rerecognize, we'll do that afterwards. Okay.
I would just say that I appreciate the feedback from our, our Legal Affairs Committee, and I would say that I agree. I was here when we hired this, the two firms that we're working with right now, and we did look at the possibility of a firm who could do it all. And you make sacrifices there in the sense that they're not local, they're, they are not from Cabarrus County. So then you have to think about paying them to come in, to attend a meeting, what kind of reaction time you get. The bigger the firm, you're just one, one small county in comparison to other counties. And so talking about specializing as well, but, you know, we're dealing, one of our firms with special education, I mean, they are the best of the best in this, in the state for this kind of law. And the fact that they are able to partner with a local firm that can handle everything else and be here, I think is just a huge advantage. And what I would say is I'm happy to hear that staff is content. I would say too, the level of interaction that we've had as a board. I have appreciated their insights and I've trusted them. And obviously, money is a part of this as well when we make decisions, but you get what you pay for. And this isn't the kind of thing that you want to take the bargain, the cheapest kind of, you want the best of the best, because we, well, we need it. And so anyway, I support this recommendation based on the history, and I understand being new, that that's difficult to not have to be part of that RFP process and understand. But I would say that the previous board was very thoughtful when we made that decision, and I'm happy to say that it's panned out this well.
Thank you, Ms. Siskel. What do you want to?
Sure, yeah, I'd just like to chime in. First, I definitely appreciate the kind words from staff. We've really enjoyed working with staff and with this board. It's now been two years as of May, so we've really enjoyed that. The consistency is, is important. To Mr. Mills' point, I mean, that's not uncommon, especially for a client as large as Cabarrus County Schools is, to have more than one law firm. It can be a good thing because we can pick each other's brains. In this case, we get along so well with Campbell Shatley. I talk to Ashley Leonard, who's their point of contact, literally every week, if not every day. We talked earlier today. And a lot of those conversations, those aren't times where billing, those are just times where picking each other's brain on something that comes forward. And she realizes that I have just a better sense of what's going on day to day because I'm here at the board meetings in the county, whereas she brings really top-notch education law expertise. I'm biased, but I think they're the best education law firm in the state. They represent thirty to thirty-five districts, so it's not uncommon for them to do bits and pieces for various boards. So that, that's not unusual for them. The good news is we've never fought over a matter. It quickly becomes obvious to us if it's an Ashley project or if it's a JH project. I think our firm brings to bear, we're, we're just a bigger firm. We're sixty lawyers. We have HR specialists, real estate specialists, construction law specialists. We have nonprofits law specialists that's come up recently. So I can kind of pick the brain of the guy whenever I need to do that. So I think that's a benefit. And so we just, it's been a very collegial relationship with Campbell Shatley, and I think they're just a strong firm. So I would be pleased if you guys want to extend us for another year. I also did want to talk, the rates and the fees are obviously a very important thing. Campbell Shatley has a little bit more flexibility than my firm, based in part, they're in Asheville. It's just a cheaper place than Charlotte. They're a smaller law firm, six partners. And then education law in general is, sometimes has lower hourly rates than some of the other practice groups. So they have offered to lower their rates for the July 1 to June 30 time period, where they would charge 275 for a partner, 250 for an associate, and 135 for an associate, for a paralegal. So that's, that's a substantial discount, and they're basically offering that because I think they really like the work. They like working with staff here. They, they would like to continue this work, and I think that's, that's, that's a great deal for the level of services you're getting, because like Ashley's a partner at that firm. And I think that's a big thing to point out, too. There's ways you could staff these things where you guys are dealing with associates. You're not. You're dealing with partners. You're dealing with Pat Kelly on HR things, he's had thirty-five years. You're dealing with Kevin Marshall on litigation, he has fifteen years. You're dealing with me on board stuff, real estate stuff, I have twenty-two years. And so I think you're getting partner-level expertise, which is, which is a good thing. And we're doing it because we like the work. It's just, it's interesting work, and we like the people we work with.
Thank you, William. I'll ask my questions. Again, the fees were a big concern, and obviously, we have a budget deficit this year that we're facing because of legal fees. Did you see how we compared to other districts? I mean, in the past, there was like a retainer for a portion of the cost, but what I, what I'm hearing is most of our increased costs are because of litigation, which is, a lot of that is out of our control. Maybe Mr. Pen could weigh, weigh in on that. You guys looked at the fees. Can you say anything to that?
We did look at neighboring fees. The one thing that makes it kind of hard to do apples to apples is their contract might be two years old, so their pricing is kind of dated. So it was kind of hard to do level-set everything, looking at that. Our pricing was, I would say, a little higher than some. It was really more diversity than I thought we would see with that type of thing. And the, I, I, but I think, I want to, I want to echo what you said in that our litigation is the huge wild card. And I guess I just, my concern is the penny wise, pound foolish kind of thing, is that we want to make sure we have good advice when we're making decisions over tens and tens of thousands of dollars. And so I'll let you speak for how you felt about it, but I felt comfortable that we are getting, for what we're paying for, I think we're getting excellent service, and I think our staff would agree with that.
Well, we looked at several different options, but we decided we liked the hourly rate better, because we got a very, very detailed report that I understand the staff goes over very carefully each month, and we felt like that was important to have. And again, it's not the monthly charges, it's the litigation that runs us up. But I think they're worth it.
Mr. Pen, do you have anything to add to, like how we're not, we don't want to be in a deficit next year? I want to make sure we budget it correctly.
No, and the budget does reflect sort of the run rate where we are right now for legal fees, right, going into next year. I will echo what Ms. Moore said about staff review. When we get the bill in, it's not a rubber stamp. I will send it out to members of the executive team, asking them to review the bill matters, and to say that affirmatively, the work that was billed reflects the work that was performed on each of those before we issue a payment. So we did request several months ago, the detailed invoices that we're receiving now at this point, which is more the model than I was used to coming out of Connecticut. But it gives us an opportunity to scrutinize the bills and say, is this reflective of the work that was performed before we issue payment?
Thank you. Sam.
One practice that came out of our conversation the other day that I wasn't aware of is we have several staff members that have standing meetings with our attorneys. I find that, I'm sure that saves us money in the long run, because, in other words, for example, EC, Ashley meets with Ms. Fitzwater every Wednesday, I believe it was. So she knows anything that's not time-sensitive, she can compact that into a thirty-minute conversation instead of getting, getting dinged every time she has to make a phone call. I think that practice is, I wasn't aware we were doing that, but I'm sure that it adds some efficiency to the thing, to everything.
The other, HR made the comment that if it's something that an associate can handle, our attorney gives it to the associate to save us money too there. So I appreciate that.
Ms. Lancaster.
So for clarification, we are, the contracts for the fee and not an actual contract for professional services. Isn't that?
Oh, that's the contract.
It's a letter of agreement.
Sure, it's, it's an engagement letter, and so it really, the way those really are written, they're for the benefit of the client. So just because you're extending us July 1 to June 30 of 2026, you guys could still come to us September 1 and say, look, it's just not working out, we need to find somebody else. It, really what it does is it locks in our rates for your benefit for planning purposes.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, it's, it's, it fully says in there that you can terminate for any reason or no reason at any time, and we would only ask you to pay for our services rendered to the date of termination.
Okay. I do think it's important to have consistency, because four of the board members here are new, so it would be nice to have the legal consistency. I do like the fact that William is with a large firm, because I feel like whatever we might encounter, there's somebody in that firm that would have experience. I also like what Catherine said as far as William knows the area. I actually taught AIG with his mother, so he grew up in a house of educators. So I think he's personally vested in our community, and I think that means a lot when we're talking about some issues. So those are my points.
Good feedback. I think everybody's had an opportunity to weigh, weigh in. Are we ready to vote for this? So we do have a motion and a second to approve or to extend our current letter of agreement with our existing counsel through June 30 of 2026. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Again, thank you to the committee for the work. It really, really helps the full board that you spent the time doing this. All right, we'll move on to 10.03, which is policies for first read. We had one that we went on here, that's the policy 4400, attendance. And just quickly, what was the change?
Sure, policy 4400 is on attendance. It proposes changing the middle school level definition of excessive absences to align with the elementary levels definition. The change will update our local policy to align with state statutes. This week, I was able to add the general statute. Ms. Escobar, you asked about it last week, I wanted to make sure we came back with that. That's the second document. General Statute 115C-378 outlines, in letters E and F, at, at six absences, Power School, our learning management system generates a letter to let parents know, hey, we're, we're treading here, right? This is not good. And then in letter F, it talks about how ten absences is where the meetings come in and where we involve our full team, our social workers and things of that nature, so that we can get a handle on what's happening with the family. So the ten absences would align with what we have, what we're proposing.
Board members, any questions, comments? Okay, this is for first read, so there's, oops.
Thank you. That's what I needed. I just wanted to make sure we were following the law and it wasn't just recommended, it was required.
Absolutely.
So this is the first read, so we will see it again next month even after we approve it. So I would need a motion and a second to approve this policy as presented. Do I have a motion? So Mr. Tredaway has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Escobar. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that motion passes, and that'll move on to second read next month. So our next item is 10.04, Mary Frances Wall Tuition Increase. We did talk about this last week, but there were some questions. So welcome to the podium again, and we'll make sure those questions are answered.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and Superintendent Dr. Kapiki. We are here tonight to present additional information regarding the proposal for a Mary Frances Wall tuition-based increase. You will notice we actually attached an artifact that just briefly outlined the overall budget for early childhood educational opportunities throughout Cabarrus County. This does not include exceptional children, I will note that. There is a separate budget line for that. However, there is a strong budget outline to make the case for the need for a tuition increase. Otherwise, we are projected in a budget deficit next year, which we do not have the funding for right now. So that is shared. And additionally, our proposal still keeps us about forty-two percent under market rate for next year, so we're not intending to get to market rate, but we do want to make sure that we can keep the health and vitality of the program going, and additionally, hopefully offer more tuition fees. Yes.
Okay, board members, discussion, questions? Greg.
Thank you for the budget. Really appreciate that. You proposed an increase this year and then an increase in the following two years. Is that what we're approving now, or we will approve that again next year and the following year?
You're approving it for the next three years. Twenty-five, twenty-five dollars each year.
Thank you.
And we do ask that for, for planning purposes for our staff. I think it's really important knowing with childcare to do that.
Okay, any other questions? Sam.
I just have a quick, Mr. Eisenhower, I have a grandson there. I'm fully supporting raising the price, but I would think I could, would not have to recuse.
I don't think so. Yeah. I don't think I would unless you're paying that too.
Thank you for disclosing that, Sam. Okay, last opportunity. All right, so I would need a motion and a second to approve the presentation of the tuition increase as presented, which is the, what is it, three-year increase?
Make a motion to approve the three-year increase as presented?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mills. Do I have a second?
I'll take it up.
Okay, second by Mr. Tredaway. Any further discussion? All right, let's, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, that, that is approved. All right, so our next item is the capital outlay for camera server purchases, and this one is for eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, fifty-nine cents. Do you appreciate you answering questions, providing additional information? I think my question last month was virtual servers instead of actual physical servers?
Yes, sir. We actually did look into that. So at the beginning of this process, we explored a couple of other options. We have been using the sole source vendor since 2014. We did explore the option of looking at a cloud-based service. It involves significant licensing fees. I shared some of these, what the, what the total expenditure would be with Mr. Pen and his team. The sole source vendor that we have is cheaper than looking at the cloud-based service at this time.
Okay.
I also shared with board members, based on a question from Ms. Lancaster about warranties. What's listed in the attachment is a twelve-month warranty on installation and labor. We also have a five-year warranty on all camera equipment and a five-year warranty on all servers. Keep in mind that we are refreshing cameras and servers that have not been refreshed in at least three years. So the goal is to get on a continuous cycle of refreshing all of this equipment. So, the goal is to get on a continuous cycle of refreshing all of this equipment, so that we do not go three years without upgrades.
Any questions, further questions? If not, I would need a motion and a second to approve the capital outlay for the camera and servers as presented.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Escobar made the motion. Do I have a second? Okay, second by Mrs. Freeman. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you very much. That motion passes.
Thank you.
So, we'll move on to 10.06, which is the 2025-26 Board Calendar, and that was presented last month, and we gave you extra weeks to kind of look at that. You, yeah, absolutely, Ms. Escobar.
I would move to approve the calendar with one change, and that would be the first meeting in July. That Monday ends up, it's like that Fourth of July weekend, it's a four-day weekend, and so, I just don't know for staff and for everyone if, anyway. So, I would just suggest that that would be the 14th, and that would be the only change that I would make to the calendar.
Okay, there are two other meeting dates that do end right after holidays, just keep that in mind. Right after our winter break, we have a meeting on the first Monday, so that's after a two-week break, and then, I think it's, is it spring break or Easter or something? There's another one as well. I'm okay, I would be okay with that change. I don't know, was, can we get somebody from staff to... Mr. Grant? Share their thoughts?
Can you speak to the calendar?
This is the board meeting calendar.
Never mind, Chuck.
So, Dr. Kupicki, what are your thoughts?
It's been a day, John, it's been a day. I apologize. Jesus.
You're fine with that?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so, staff appears to be fine with the suggested change, so we would need a motion and a second to approve the calendar with the one date changed in July, what was it, what was that date?
July 14.
July 14. And we're, just keep in mind, there is only one meeting in July because of the summer breaks and vacations, so that is a combined meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the calendar as amended.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so that is approved, and I did have a question for William related to our meeting for next week.
Yes, I was going to point that out.
So, we have a...
You have a change where this spring planning session, yes, getting moved from April 28 to April 21, which is next Monday.
Can we just announce that and publicize it, or do we have to actually have a...
I think you can just announce that, and then it'll be publicized.
Okay, so, somebody, what do I want, what do I want? So, next week, we were having quarterly planning session, and it was originally scheduled for the 29th?
April 28.
April 28, and it's been moved forward to Monday, April 21.
And you'd surveyed board members, we are available.
All are available, yes.
Okay, so, but we have to make sure we get it published and advertised, right?
Yes.
And that is a meeting that's not on camera, because it was a part of the contract, right? Okay, any other questions related to that? So, that's, we will put that out as soon as we get the agenda done for that. Okay, so, with, that's just an announcement, and we will move on to our last item and action item, and this is a request by our board member to add an opening invocation to our board meetings, and really a discussion on if the board is willing to entertain that, and if so, how would that work? And that would kind of involve policy. But Mrs. Freeman had made the request, so I am going to let her give, let us know, give us the background on the request.
From the very beginning, when the Puritans touched ground in the New World, prayer has been the bedrock of this nation. The First Continental Congress relied heavily on prayer to move forward in their deliberations and bring unity in writing our Constitution. Today, our U.S. Congress begins each opening day with an invocation before reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Many state governments, as well as municipalities, also begin their meetings with an invocation. We have a National Day of Prayer. We have "In God We Trust" on our money, and we pledge allegiance to One Nation Under God. The Supreme Court has ruled on two separate occasions that an invocation does not violate the Establishment Clause in our Constitution, and having an invocation is a time-honored tradition of our country. For these reasons and more, I respectfully make a motion to include an invocation to our agenda and meetings moving forward. I also ask this to be forwarded to the Policy Committee to write guidelines that may be voted on by this board.
Okay, in order to have a discussion, we would need a second to that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. So, we will open it up to discussions. Anyone? Pam, Escobar, please.
So, I tried to get this off the agenda today, because I just think we have bigger fish to fry. We've got a budget, we have serious decisions that need to be discussed, and the reality is, is that if we don't get what we ask for, staff and us are going to have to sit down and really take a hard look at the budget. We are in budget season. I don't understand why this needs to be discussed, or why we need to bring it to a Policy Committee to review, when many of the people on the Policy Committee are the same staff that would have to grapple with the decisions related to the budget. So, that's the one, the first thing. Talking about tradition, so, you saw this meeting tonight. It was beautiful, right? The first part, first hour, this room was filled with parents and students and teachers and staff who are award-winning, exceptional people. And if you looked at our audience, they don't look like us. They look like this community. We are diverse. We come from 92 countries. We speak 67 languages. We represent the United States, we also represent Cabarrus County, and if you put prayer at the beginning of this meeting, I don't think that's a welcoming sign to the people who are in this room tonight. There are people in this room that don't practice the faith that the people on this board practice. And, you know, we had an award-winning teacher tonight, right? She's only been teaching for two years, and in her kindergarten class, she welcomes everyone into her classroom, right? They talked about how the kids, every child belongs, every child belongs, and I would not want to do anything that says to this community, you don't belong in our school district, you don't belong in our public school system. And so, this, to me, is very disturbing, because I think it sends the wrong message that we're trying to communicate. And frankly, we are not in the business of faith or religion. That's not what we do. We teach, we empower, we inspire, and so, to do something that would be the opposite of that is disheartening. And then, on top of it, this board prays. This board prays before every meeting, if you choose to be a part of it. You have an invocation that is outside, and it's led by a lobbyist with Capital Ministries, who is, I don't know, he's been here as long as I've been on the board, and how much prayer do you need? How much God do you need? We say "Under God," we say it, we say it. Why do we need to say more? And I will tell you, just personally, as a board member, I do not feel welcome to be part of that prayer. And I'm Christian, and I don't feel welcome to go outside and pray with you. So, if I'm one of seven people who are sitting up here who's telling you, this is exclusionary, how can we be a part of the school system and then do that to our entire school district? If you're going to bring this policy forward, I would seriously want us to take a look at, are we violating policy if more than four people are praying before our meeting? And it's happening every week. I think today was the first time it wasn't five of you, but it was still four, still four. And policy says, if you're going to do that, then you need to be transparent about that. I don't know what Mr. Marshall is praying about. Is he telling you how to vote? Is he telling you what to believe? Capital Ministries, for those who are not aware, is a lobbyist, a conservative lobbyist. He used to send us all emails. I requested to be off the list, because I was offended by some of the things that he was saying. So, I don't know if that's the direction he's giving you before all of our meetings. Is he telling you not to trust me? I mean, I don't know, but the fact that the five of you are doing that, I hope that's enough prayer for you. Everyone who's sitting here still now are professionals. They come to work to dedicate their lives to children. They didn't come here to pray with you. If you want to pray with them, take them to church. You want to be evangelical and do that, go for it, but not on my time, not on their time, and not in this community's time. We're not in this business, this is not the time or the place. We're better than that.
Okay, Pam, thank you for your passionate thoughts, so, we, anyone else want to... Mr. Mills?
Sure, I don't mind weighing in. We were handed out, just prior to this meeting, a policy from Cleveland County, that kind of outlines what they do in terms of their prayer. I think it gets fairly open. I think that there's plenty of precedent that says that, probably one of the few local governing bodies that doesn't open our meetings with an invocation. And for me, the invocation doesn't have to be this sort of onerous thing that's pressing down a certain religion on you. It's really a good time for us as a board. You've got to understand, the invocation is over these board members, right? It's not for the benefit of the YouTube audience, it's not for the benefit of the people in this room. It's for us to sort of take a beat at the beginning of the building, at the beginning of the meeting, and focus ourselves on the solemnity of the work that we have to do. And I think that's the purpose of an invocation, and I think that's the purpose that serves in most of our government bodies, and I personally think it would be beneficial for us here. I think it has a potential to really be a unifying thing instead of a divisive thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Anyone over here? Mr. Tredaway?
Yeah, I asked for this to be dropped from the agenda, only because I, I'm one that believes that your decision is no better than the process used to get that decision, and this is not Ms. Freeman's right to ask for it to be on the agenda, that's a clear policy. I just think this needs to go straight to Policy, the Policy Committee, it should never have come here first. We don't do that with policies. It hadn't even been vetted by our attorney, as far as I know. So, I mean, I just think we need to go straight to the Policy Committee, and then it bubbles up to us, like every other policy we do.
Okay, we have a motion that actually starts invocation at the meeting, didn't have any, the policy was secondary on the motion. I would like to see a policy, so we understand and have direction to give, if this board supports that or not. I mean, first off, we may not support it, or we may, and if we do, then I think, in order to give the Policy Committee some direction on what kind of a policy we'd like, this was a suggestion, I guess it came, another school system is currently using it, so it would be a starting point, but I think it covers a lot of the things that most of us would think are important on how you do that, where it's not non-discriminatory, there's some limit on it. But, anyway, again, this is a discussion on this particular motion.
I just feel like, to be clear, I just feel like this is the cart and horse backwards, that this should have gone to the Policy Committee, where it's vetted by our attorney, vetted by the, and to make sure we're not doing something litigious, and then it comes up to us for final approval. That's, the process, I think, is backwards, that's the only thing I'm seeing.
Okay, thank you for your thoughts. Anyone else?
Can I get a read of the motion that's currently on the floor?
Can you read your motion? Ms. Freeman?
You made a motion that the Board of Education developed a policy regarding the implications of work for meetings.
Okay, that's the recommended action. What Ms. Freeman read was different. But if you are, are you okay with the recommended motion?
Yes, I just wanted to make a statement, but I guess the motion is, because I'm not real sure how to proceed either, but yes, it would go to Policy, so if we want to say, to go ahead to the Policy to investigate the, and to work it up, that's fine with me. I had a conversation with Pam earlier today, and she was concerned, as she mentioned tonight, about the time, and pulling our staff off of work to, during this busy season with the budget. We are pretty much finished with the budget as of our passing of it tonight, and the, as I checked, the Policy Committee already has a schedule that's embedded in the calendar. There would be no extra work that would be required of the Policy or staff people to do. And to answer the comment that we're not in the business of praying, I would, I would... So, we need to get rid of it in our state houses and in our other municipalities, and in our Senate in the United States, who has it every day, that they open for a session, they have a chaplain who opens their meetings, and this has been, as a Christian nation, this is what we have done for 250 years. So, to be offended at this point, because we have immigrants that have come into our country, seems a little bit out there for me, because the prayers of the people have always been for people, not against people. I don't understand, I, and in the interest of transparency, to have us pray in here, it seems like it would be more transparent than to have to meet in the hall.
Okay, everyone's entitled to opinions, and they can be different, and I don't want to make any attacks on any other, any board member, so if you want to respond...
I do want to respond, because if you really, truly wanted it to be unifying, it wouldn't have been brought up this way. I had to call you, and you said to me, you knew I would have a problem with this, and so, I'll just go, this week is Passover, Friday is Good Friday, Sunday is Easter Sunday. There are a lot of people that are not going to be celebrating any of that, that live in my neighborhood, and I just, I just don't understand why you're comfortable excluding people, and I'm not, I can't control what they do at the General Assembly. I can't control what they do in Congress. I can control what happens here, and speak out for the people that are not sitting here. But you saw them tonight, like, did you see the kids singing? Did you see their parents taking pictures? Not everyone, we don't track people's faiths or religion, because again, we are not in that business, but I can guarantee you, not everyone who was in this room tonight is Christian. And I respect your faith, I respect it. I also respect the fact that that's how you decide to make your decisions, but telling me that I have to agree with you guys, that I have to do it the way you do it, that's not American. Do we need to have a history lesson about why we wrote what we wrote, why we did what we did, why we fled England? Because we wanted religious freedom, and it was so important, they stuck it in the Constitution, and guess what? If you do this, we're going to have legal challenges. So, we're sitting here tonight, talking about how much litigation we have, and things that are in our control and out of our control, right? We can't control who sues us, but if you do this, it takes one person, and guess what? It goes all the way to the Supreme Court, because it's in the Constitution. And Rowan County, the Rowan County Commissioners dealt with this for... And Rowan County, the Rowan County Commissioners dealt with this for 10, or 10 years ago, and it went all the way up, and I sent an article today to the chair, and I hope he shares it with all of you, the costs associated with doing something like this. So there are things you can control, and things that you can't. You want to pray, you can control that you pray before this meeting. I don't need to participate in that, and I don't think you need to say that, make the entire school district join you in your prayer, and if you do, then you have to be prepared for people to sue us, because they have the right to religious freedom. You want to talk about what's being American, about being patriotic, that's American.
Okay, I appreciate your passion on this in the statements, but we are a board, it's a board decision, not an individual board member decision, so I'll let anyone who hasn't wait in, wait in, and then we'll either make.
Can I make one more statement? This was not to prohibit anybody's prayers. The policy would, would specify that it is not just Christian prayers that would be welcome here, it would be any religion's prayers. And so that, that would be a consideration for the Policy Committee, and they would, they would put us in legal standing, the way we need to be.
So the motion passes, obviously, we have to draft something that would be fair.
There's work associated with that, too, so if you pass a policy that a different person can come through, who's going to vet that person? Who's going to make sure what they're saying is appropriate? How are we going to do this? Oh, and then guess what? If this person submits something, and we prohibit them from saying what they submitted, then we get into whole free speech things. You are creating, like, the amount of work associated with it, either with our staff or with our lawyers, this is not a simple, let's just say a prayer, it's very complicated, both in the preparation, and then the execution. And again, we spent an hour celebrating our students, and our faculty, and our staff today, why do I want to spend a second making things tricky or difficult for the lawyers who work for our school system, or the staff? What, what is the benefit of that workload, when you can pray, and you do right now? Let's be clear, what this thing is saying, Cleveland, what Cleveland County does is they pray, and, and it's outside, it's not during the meeting. So I just, again, what are, what, how is this good for kids? How is this good for our school district? How is this being a good steward of taxpayer dollars?
Okay.
It's not.
I understand we're all, you're passionate about it, again, it's a board, it's a, it's a board decision, she did have a right to add it to the agenda, which, it was done properly, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Are we amending the motion to be the one that was written in the agenda, or we?
That is a good question, were, were you okay, Pam? Pam has objected either way.
I think we do need clarification on what, on what the motion is, whether it's what's written in 10.07, or if it's what Ms. Freeman said, and that that's ultimately a board decision. Can you, can you show me what your, what your motion was? Or you're good with what's in here? So, yeah, I think this was written intentionally in 10.07, in that we are clearly not adopting a policy tonight. What the board is doing, is the board is making a motion and a second and a vote to develop a policy, that, that process would go through the Policy Committee, and we would draft that. The Cleveland County one is just an example that Lori and I located, that, you know, just serves as an example of what another Board of Education does. This is obviously a board decision, every Board of Education, every county, every municipality does it different, these are typically before, or at the start of a meeting, some people don't even have a policy, I'd say more often than not, they don't have a policy. I tend to think it's a positive for us, if we're going to do this, to have a written policy that can give us some protections. We will make it very clear, this is open to all religions, it is going to have the opportunity for anybody to come forward, invited clergy, it's intended to be, you know, to solemnize the proceedings, really. Obviously, we'll have to make very clear that if someone chooses not to participate, that we won't treat them differently, and that will be a part of the written policy, that we don't want to have anybody think that just because they didn't participate, they will be treated differently by this board, which I know we won't. But anyway, the policy will just help memorialize these things, which in turn helps protect us, because from the attorney's point of view, I'm risk averse, and do, having this at the beginning of a meeting, does it open us up? Yes. Hopefully, if we do it right, that, that should minimize the issues here, but it does have, you know, in these times, someone suing, Rowan County, for example, what they got in trouble for is their Commissioners led the invocation themselves at every meeting. I would say that we most likely will come out of the Policy Committee and not do that, not have the seven of you participate in that, it probably should be an invited clergy of some sort to participate. So there's things, lessons learned, where we won't follow some of the people who have gotten dinged by this, but, but yeah, ultimately, it's a board decision, but I think the process here is, you guys are giving us guidance to take this to the Policy Committee, Policy Committee will work through it, and then it would ultimately come back before the board.
Okay, thank you. Greg, are you okay with, are you okay with the, using this motion, seconding that motion? Okay Pam, one last time, please.
Again, you chose to put this on the agenda, so I have every right to speak.
Up to 15 minutes.
Okay, you want me to, you, do you want to time me now? Because I'll go for it.
Is it legitimate, point of, point of order, is it legitimate to call the question right now?
Can you let me make a statement? You just cut me off.
I'm asking a question, so as a point of order, can I ask a question?
Certainly, you've talked at least three times now, so.
Yeah.
Let's make your summary, and we'll move on to a vote.
I don't know why you need prayer to take this job seriously. Everyone up here took an oath, every meeting that we've had since you've been here has been taken seriously, I have not participated, like I said, in your prayer, and I don't think anyone would doubt my commitment to the students of this district. So why you need this, to take it seriously, when you took an oath, is questionable. So, again, I've made it perfectly clear where I stand, but don't say this is going to unify, when I'm telling you it will not, because I'm, I'm one person, and no, I am not seven people, and yes, you only need four, but if I tell you I'm offended, I'm offended. That is not going to unify us, and if, in practice, where you tell somebody, you don't have to participate, and don't worry, you won't be dinged, or whatever, like, how do you do that? How do you do that? How does, are you going to say to everybody in the room who's like packed in here like sardines, because they want to take a picture of their kid, oh, hold on a second, we're going to do this thing that's going to make you super uncomfortable right now, so you're going to leave the room? No, they're not going to leave the room, because they want to save their seat. There's a practicality to the reality of the situation that you're ignoring, but also the fact that you're ignoring the words that I'm saying, and making, that you're saying that's your argument, that we have to, we won't be solemn enough, we won't, we won't take this seriously? What have you been doing for the last six months? Huh? Why do you need this? How does this benefit kids? And I have not heard a decent answer.
Okay, call the question?
I'm not sure what we're voting on.
Okay, we're, the motion.
The motion is written.
The motion is written now, which makes the policy, or sends it to the Policy Committee to develop, so we will have at least, you'll have the Policy Committee opportunity to vet, vet the policy, vet it, it'll be here on our first read, the public will have an opportunity to comment, and there will actually be a second read before it would be implemented. All right, so that, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Aye, anybody opposed, raise your hand, say no.
No.
Okay, Lori, did you get that? Okay, so that motion did pass, so that'll be directed to the Policy Committee. Okay, and with that, that was our last action item for this meeting, we do have a need for a closed session, so let me read the reason for the closed session, and, so we'll need a motion and a second, that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney, to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 14331811A3, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 14331811A6. So do I have a motion and a second? Okay, motion by Lancaster, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Treadaway, all in favor, say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, we are in, going into closed session, so we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we will see you next month.